All right, any motion to reconvene in open session?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's, open session. Item E is public comparisons and I have a number. And we'll start with Jennifer Bustin. When you're doing the public comparisons, please come up to the speakers' table so that there's, we can hear you at the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening, Jennifer Bustin, 501 East State House Trail Madison. I also teach six eight vocal music and fifth grade general music here in this district. I wanted to speak briefly about the music staffing, both from a parent perspective, I have a daughter in the district, and from a teacher perspective. First, a thank you, even without knowing what is in the superintendent's report tonight, I really appreciated the opportunity to meet with him and discuss the vocal music program at GDS. My personal feeling is that the conversation was meaningful and I hope that I answered any questions that you may have had about the program. I'll be starting my seventeenth year at MG.
It's hard to believe, I remember when you came.
It's hard to tell.
Wow.
So to take a step back and explain my program actually gives me a chance to see it through a different lens and it gave me quite a bit to reflect upon. I really believe that we are at a stage of decision, critical mass if you will, with our arts programs. My interest in the fine arts program at MG is not just tied to a paycheck, I have a daughter open enrolled in this district. Today I took her and a friend to day three of a Wizards, Fairies, and Elves camp. They're learning about problem solving, science, and engineering, all through this beautiful fantasy world that started with literature, the Harry Potter books. Literature that has given kids and adults so much joy. After that, we went to Fire it Up to Paint Pottery and they were singing all the way there and back. When we got home, they were having a dance-off in the basement, shooting silly YouTube videos, playing veterinarian with the stuffed animals. And as I thought of it to say tonight, it was the activities of today that really struck me and the seamless integration of music, art, dance, and literature into our children's daily lives and in almost everything that they do. It's not measurable. We don't have data, we don't have test scores to prove the worth of the arts in our schools. But they are so worthy of this district's investment. MG has a very deep, proud history of accomplishments in the arts, from our exceptional music programs at the elementary levels, to the bands, choirs, and orchestras six twelve, to the art program and its students being displayed at the Capitol and many other venues around the state. This arts program is alive and strong here. We help kids strive to be their best, we teach listening, we teach critical thinking all along the way. We are a prime example of teaching kids that with great effort comes great results and that at many times, the best things in life do not come easily. We teach cooperation, love, and patience, and every day we show our students that they should seek and revel in unexpected joys. Our classrooms are a model study of acceptance and that, sorry, of acceptance and that being different should not just be accepted, but it should also be celebrated. For many students, we provide not only a bright spot in their day, but the only chance to be on equal footing with all of their peers. The success that they achieve in our classes helps build confidence that extends well beyond the walls of our classrooms. There are a multitude of studies that show that participation and engagement in the arts lead to greater student success on report cards, test results, and in life in general. No data can ever fully capture the need that our students have to be loved, accepted, and successful. As a music teacher in this district, I want to work with you to maintain that excellence. I hope that tonight we can begin a conversation in partnership to ensure that the arts programs at MG continue to thrive and grow. Please don't hesitate to contact me if you have questions or concerns, and I would love to take this chance to invite each and every one of you personally to attend all of our concerts and events, come and get to know our work, and especially come and get to know our kids. There is such joy and spirit in what they do and show up to the world. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next is.
Well, actually, we get to ask a question. So I get to ask a question?
Sure.
Jen knows I've never done that.
Not a problem.
So the question I ask you is that if, when you know you're going to have a program, we try and read the most letters, but when you know you're going to have a program and you've done this for me, just let us know.
As soon as I get the schedule type out that has all of the events for the whole year, I will make sure that I share it.
Which is just great. And again, that feeling of feeling welcome and that you'd like us to be there helps us to make sure we get it on the calendar and we're there if we can be there.
We would love it.
And it helps a lot. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrea, and I apologize, is it Rupert or?
Yep, Rupert.
Rupert.
So I'll say my name and my address?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My name is Andrea Rupert and I live at 5512 Schluter Road in Manona. I'm a parent of a rising first grader at Winnequa School and a three-year-old, and I'm also a professor in the School of Education at UW Madison. I wholeheartedly endorse the educational approach of proposed charter school, yet I have deep reservations about the development of the charter school itself. Instead, I would like to voice my support for integrating the principles of the school, which seem to resonate with many parents, into the existing curriculum of the elementary schools and the Manona Grove School District. The proposed approach, which might be characterized as a project-based or inquiry-based model, has proven benefits for a wide variety of learners. And I've noticed that, at least at Winnequa, teachers tend to teach to the middle, ignoring the tails of the normal curve. Indeed, this supports their goal of high test scores, but it also depresses opportunities to learn among students who require a more innovative approach, such as students who need more motivation to be engaged in school, and students who abilities reach the ceiling of the standardized assessments that are the focus of so much learning time. In my short time as an MGSD parent, and with a very, with a few exceptions, notable exceptions, I have actually been shocked at how dated the instructional practices appear. A new approach is needed, but a charter school is not the answer. I'd like to offer a few guiding questions to the school board members as they consider their votes. First, to what extent would the development of the charter school exclude various groups of students from the opportunity to engage in learning that might stimulate their imaginations in new directions, wrap them into school in a way that test-friendly drill-and-kill instruction cannot, and keep them engaged through high school and beyond? Second, to what extent might this school divide our community? Since moving to Manona, I have been enthralled with the sense of community here. As a Girl Scout leader and a classroom volunteer, I feel like I know many of my daughter's peers and their families. If I choose to leave Winnequa to give my children the opportunity to learn according to an approach that aligns not only with my values but with research-based practices, what would I be leaving behind? Parents should not need to make that choice. Our children should all have access to the high-quality learning opportunities that might be offered at the charter school. In a guest column in the Herald Independent, Dan Groupie, I think I'm saying that name right, suggested that it would not be feasible to, quote, "experiment" with this approach on a school-wide level, and I can tell you that this is not true. Project-based or inquiry-based learning is grounded in research that stretches back to John Dewey at the turn of the century. Honestly, it's not all that new or even that innovative, it's just good teaching. Many traditional public schools have adopted this approach and this should not be considered an experiment. And finally, I return to a question that was asked of me as I was preparing to become a teacher. Whose interests are being served? Does this school serve the interests of the increasingly diverse student body of MGSD? From where did the proposal originate? And would the school be serving outside interests? My understanding is that the results of the spring survey indicated that the development of a charter school ranked dead last among parents in MGSD. Yet the idea of this educational approach is appealing to many. Whose interests would actually be served by this charter school and whose interests might be served if an inquiry-based approach was incorporated into every school? My suspicion is that all students' interests would be best served by the latter, but only a few would be served by the former. Tonight, I implore the school board to abandon the idea of using our tax money to explore a charter school and reallocate those dollars to exploring new and innovative approaches like project-based learning that will continue to attract and engage all children in learning in MGSD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Susan, did you have?
Yeah, I think one of my questions is that, have you had an opportunity to listen to the board discussion the night that we were doing, we were talking about the innovation? You can stream that.
Okay, I can stream that online, is that correct?
Yes, if we could actually get Will to help you do that, it's helpful in that.
If I may, you can go to YouTube, there's a Manona TV channel, and if you scroll through the list, you'll find the board meeting.
What was the date of that board meeting? Because that was one of the things, is like, I didn't want to like watch it.
June, it was the second meeting in June or the first meeting in June?
I'll look it up while you're here.
Try to look it up.
Okay. The reason I ask that question is that it was new to all of us that evening, and I think I would ask that you might see insights. So I'm allowed to ask you a question, but I can't tell you anything. So if you were interested, then you might watch that and it might show some insights into this discussion and the thought of looking at the project as a integrated curriculum piece.
Great, good.
And the word that I heard that night that was enlightening to me that you may not have heard, have you heard that, is pilot in integration? And again, have you had an opportunity to talk to Lisa Hype? Because she's a great resource to start and then Dan.
Great.
I always mention, I really appreciate your comments and I'd love to have a follow-up conversation with you, so I've got your contact information.
Sure. Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Next is Jessica Houston.
Jessica Houston, 501 Nightingale Lane, Cottage Grove. So hello and thank you for this opportunity. I have a five-year-old going into kindergarten at Taylor Prairie this year and I work as a registered nurse. I am in favor of the proposed charter school for this district and this community. The National Alliance for Public Charter Schools shows that national enrollment has grown sixfold in the past fifteen years as parents are looking for high-quality educational options. And despite considerable variation among the types of the charter schools, the overall evidence suggests that charter schools more often outperform than underperform their traditional public school counterparts, especially in the areas of elementary reading and middle school math. The pillars on which this school will be founded, community, environment, healthy eating, movement, are in theory, basic principles that every public school teaches. And yet, something is lacking as children sit at their desks and read textbooks about science or gardening, but they never go outside to play in the dirt, not even after school, or how they use their iPads to Google about community issues, but they don't become active participants in talking to their community about how to fix the issue collaboratively for the benefit of the community versus themselves. I grew up in a small-town farming community and it's hard to wrap my mind around how to teach some of these values to this generation of children and especially these children growing up in suburbia. This school, I believe, would help that cause. Charter schools have more flexibility and innovation than traditional public schools, not only in the teaching styles, but also in the administrative backing surrounding how lessons are delivered in the most meaningful and effective way. As an engaged parent, I would do whatever I could to support my child's learning, the teachers, and the success of the school itself. This side of Madison has been waiting for a charter school for years, and it's exciting to see what might happen in the near future for myself and many of the other parents that I've talked to. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I appreciate, I support the development of the charter school, but I want to, at least I want you to rethink your statement that necessarily charter schools outperform general public classrooms, because largely charter schools are self-selected by parents. And it ended up skewing the sample, which they will test later. So the statistical differences often are due to the sample bias for it. But I do think that your comments about the charter school offering different options and different opportunities, we would hope, and we would hope that if it's successful, we can integrate those practices into the regular school system too. But I wouldn't be entirely confident in your original statement, they outperform, because if you have parents that are engaged and interested and they make the selection of the school, they're also more likely to be the parents that will be following up and engaged in that new school, you know, rather than kind of be left in the wilderness with the old schools of the sweep. So I think it's a.
Susan, although we do need to avoid discussion.
Yeah, we aren't really going to, I just want to make one kind of point adding on to that, that I think it's important when you think about charter schools to not, the governance of a school is not the determining factor in how children learn, it's what goes on in the schools. And you can have a lot of different kinds of teaching going on, different kinds of teaching and learning going on in a regular public school just as well as you can in a charter school. It just depends on what you're doing, and I mean, if there are some specific differences in setting up a charter school where it frees you from some policies and things, it doesn't by virtue of the fact that you're doing that, and I think it does give more flexibility. There are some advantages to starting a trial program that way and learning new things that way and trying out different things, but it doesn't mean that it's magically going to be good because it's a charter, and so I'm just agreeing with what you're saying. There's nothing magical in that structure that makes a good school. And I just think it's important for us all to remember that as we talk about all of this, that it's a complex situation, I mean, education as a general.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
But thank you, yeah, thank you.
I would, because of the, you know, the way the meeting is noticed and so on, I would ask the board members restricted comments to questions of our speakers. Thank you very much, Jessica.
I consider myself reprimanded.
Me too.
We just need to avoid.
Spare ass forgiveness, right?
I'm sorry, next we have Bethany Kearns.
My name is Bethany Kearns, I live at 1013 Wilbridge Road in Cottage Grove. Good evening, members of the school board, especially Mrs. Fox, my old social studies teacher.
Former.
Former, former.
I have a question. Did you think of that, Dean, when I was thinking of the board meeting? I had former social studies teacher. I am a Manona Grove alumna as well as a UW Madison graduate. When my husband and I purchased our home over ten years ago, I knew that I wanted a house in Manona or Cottage Grove so that our children would have the same excellent education that I did. Now that my oldest attends Taylor Prairie and I volunteer weekly in the school, I am able to see firsthand many of the things I read online about the state of public education in America. I truly do feel there is much room for improvement. The amount of testing implemented to make sure everyone is meeting the common core standards results in far, far too much direct instruction, especially to our youngest elementary learners. For some children, this will work, but for many, including my own, it does not. As a proud Silver Eagle ninety-seven, I know firsthand what amazing teachers and students we have here. I think that if we can let everybody return to doing what they do best, let the teachers teach, and the children remain excited about learning, wonderful things will happen. The tenants for the proposed elementary charter school discuss many things that have been left behind in current education practices, particularly project-based learning, movement, and most importantly, imagination and creativity. America is currently figuring out how to change its educational model to meet the needs of an ever more rapidly evolving society. And a charter school here in the Manona Grove School District, especially with its tradition of excellence, would help discover and promote best practices that can then be shared with our own and other school districts. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions? All right, next we have Lynn Brown.
Good evening. My name's Lynn Brown, I live at 5208 McKenna Road in Manona. I live in Manona with my husband Craig and our two boys, ages five and two. Almost two years ago exactly, we moved to Manona, mostly because of the excellent reputation of the Manona Grove Schools. My husband and I are products of public schools, my mom was a public school teacher for over thirty years. We pulled our kids around the neighborhood in their little red wagon, canvassing for the referendum this spring. Shortly after, so we believe in public schools, shortly after we moved to Manona, we contacted Ann Trader and asked for a tour of Winnequa. We also toured Nuestro Mundo. What struck us about both schools is that while they seem to tick the boxes that many parents typically look for, they were missing some key elements that would allow our oldest son to thrive. It's still a little too early to tell with our youngest, so I'll just address the oldest here. Our oldest is bright, he doesn't have physical or neurological challenges, he respects authority. He would probably sail through traditional school, much like my husband and I did. He wouldn't disrupt class, he'd follow the teacher's lead and do well on tests. But he might just get to the end of his thirteen years of schooling without the fire in his belly, without a passion for learning. He could very easily end up the kind of young adult that we were, not aimless by any stretch, but not fulfilled and much, much too extrinsically motivated. We want our kids to be relentlessly curious, critical thinkers, mindful of their interactions with the world and how they're affected by it. We want them to have metacognitive skills, basically to know how they feel about what they know. Skills to analyze, evaluate, change their mind, approach a problem from different angles. Skills that we didn't begin to attain until much, much later in life. Skills that will help the next generation handle the big problems of the world, via climate change, social injustice, political reform. In full disclosure, I'm one of the four founding parents who brought this proposal to the district. The reason I've taken so many vacation hours and thrown myself and my family into this initiative is because we believe in the research that shows that the pillars of this school are the way to ensure that children are intrinsically motivated to learn. We want this for our son, not because he's a special snowflake, although as his mother, I can assure you, he is very special, but because this approach will light his fire for learning and fuel it with his own innate curiosity and interest. A charter school has the ability to be agile and with autonomy, but a deliberate role of the liaison to serve across the district, has the ability to serve as an incubator for best practices to be shared throughout the district. As a member of the planning committee, I invite you to attend our last full planning meeting on August eighteenth from nine to twelve, to see for yourself the work being done by the extraordinary teachers and administrators there, and to raise any concerns or questions that you have, so that we have time to address them before this comes up for a vote on August twenty-fourth. I urge you to listen to supporters and vote in favor of continuing with the school with plans to open in fall of 2017. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you very much. And that's all of the speakers, thanks everybody who came to comment.
June eighth was the meeting.
June eighth, Andrea, June eighth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda, I ask for approval of the consent agenda as a motion for approval of the consent agenda is presented.
So move.
Second. Consent agenda has been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion consent agenda is approved. Item G, recognitions.
Peter, I do want to, I want to go back and make sure that we can validate that contracts should be approved in the consent agenda. I didn't pull it tonight because I've been doing it every time, I get tired of doing this, but I do want us to validate, I'm asking you as board president to validate, that contracts are okay to be in a consent agenda.
Okay.
Because that means you've looked at it as a board member, you've read it, and you understand what your legal obligations are as a board member within that contract.
Okay, I will ask.
Thank you.
Make a determination of that, thank you. Item G, recognitions.
I do have one, I'll first defer to administrators if they have any, this evening. Okay. The board is actually, you receive this by email, but I just want to state publicly, recognize that we had fourteen staff members that attended the national leadership of for Social Justice Institute at UW Madison at the end of July, and two of the individuals are here in the room, Lisa Hype and Krista McCumber, two of our administrators, but also Renee Tennant, James Kamoku, Emily Pique, Melissa Moreau, Shelby Steele, Reed Foster, Emily Foster, Mindy Boyd, Deidre Gorman, Elena Wagner, Chris Langer, and Tanya Green. And we have teachers, administrators that do all kinds of professional development throughout the year, throughout the summer, but this one in particular, this was a week-long, and so these, you know, teachers, administrators committed to five days, and certainly that's something that will inform, you know, the work that we're doing with our equity work as part of our strategic planning and the work in the buildings, but I just want to make special mention of those dedicated individuals that attended that week.
Thank you. Then it's the correspondence and announcements. And we'll move on to my administrative reports, starting with the music staffing, the super agenda report, including music staffing.
All right, so on the agenda, I'm going to address the music staffing. Before I do that, I would like to just make a quick comment with regard to the charter school planning, make sure we have clarification with regard to the process and so on. First of all, thank you all who came tonight with your comments, they're very much appreciated. And as you know, that we've had a team investigating the possible charter school, looking at school innovations in general as well, meeting many, many hours throughout the summer, and we appreciate the work that they've done. The full planning team, as was mentioned, will be meeting again a week from Thursday to kind of put together the report that will be presented to the board on August twenty-fourth. I also want to make clear there will not be any vote on the twenty-fourth, it'll be information only. Basically, there will be a recommendation from the team, but it'll be an opportunity for the board to hear the report, and we will talk about next steps and timeline and so on. I will be attending that last planning team meeting, we'll talk about the procedure, you know, with that and so on, but I just wanted to make it clear that there won't be any vote that evening, but we will talk about, you know, mostly information gathering and then talking about potential next steps and so on. Okay. So then, secondly, staffing report, specifically with music staffing. And if you recall, our staffing plan this past year, we presented in kind of two parts. The first part was done in January, and that was prior to knowing the results of the referendum and actually prior to even, I think, even the final determination about the referendum, but based on specific needs that we knew we needed just to maintain board guidelines with class size and so on, and so we kind of had two different approval processes. We approved the preliminary part back in January, and then we were waiting to see the results of the referendum to see if we could add any supplemental positions. And so one of the things that I learned through this process, as we talked about the music staffing in particular, is the communication and the process about how we came about with the recommendation for the staffing plan. And I will address a little bit what we'll be looking at doing forward as well, some things that we've learned that were maybe some of the breakdown in communication occurred as well. But the approach that we took as an administrative team was that master schedules needed to be done, you know, throughout the spring and basically finalized prior to knowing the results of the referendum. And so that when we looked at additional staffing positions that we'd come back and asked to add, following the potential successful results of the referendum, would be ones that wouldn't necessarily impact the master's schedule, and that was the basic premise. And so we had kind of agreed as admin, well, not kind of, we did agree as administrative team, to bring forward the ones that we did, and there were a few additional positions, I think three full-time positions that we brought forth, additional gifted and talented, additional math coach, and I forget the third position now, but in any case, that was the rationale for how we brought those forward. We did have some discussions, and I was involved with discussions regarding music staffing, as well as many other departments and areas that we might have some needs that need to be addressed, you know, as well in the future, that we think can help serve student needs. So you did get a report, and actually from our music teachers about what they had requested, would like to see for some additional music staffing. And at that time, of course, it stated that I would come back and respond to that request and talk about it. And so part of the reason there's been some time lapse in between this, the board heard the report on May eleventh, and we had approved the staffing plan that evening. What I've done in the meantime is between May eleventh and the end of the school year, met with a number of individual music teachers at several levels, primarily the middle school and high school, to learn more specifically about how their programs worked, the history of the staffing, and so on. Now, of course, I had some of that preliminary information prior to, from what I've learned from principals, and some previous discussions with music teachers, but I wanted to make sure I really had a good grasp exactly what our situation was in order to, we could look at, you know, how we're going to make decisions about that staffing. And then after I met with the teachers, I wanted to go back and have follow-up discussions with the principals to make sure that we were on the same page and, you know, whether it be with accuracy, with, you know, assignments and so on, before I came to the board and so on. Technically, I was going to report in the last meeting, and then because of some of the summary issues, it got delayed to this one, but anyway, that's the rationale for why we're here this evening. So what I decided to do is, I gave you some information on the board docs, but I didn't put my overall report recommendations in written form, I'm going to talk about that verbally, and this is going to be a work in progress. It's not that I'm going to report tonight and say it's a done issue, because it's not, there's going to be continued follow-up that needs to occur. But I want you to leave tonight understanding the decision-making process, what will move forward in the future for the decision-making process, and most importantly, you understand what our staffing levels are currently. process, and most importantly, you understand what our staffing levels are currently, and where the areas that we have discussion that need to be had about are we meeting student needs in those particular levels. So the documents that you have, you have a one-page summary that says two thousand sixteen seventeen music staffing, and that simply states, for general music at grades K five, our students meet forty minutes two times per week, and a list of who the teachers are. Okay, the staffing recommendation didn't necessarily drill directly with general music other than we have some shared staffing, you know, the middle school with that. But then, more specifically, band as a group, and the strings or orchestra as a group, and then the choir or vocal music, are three parts of our music program that are, as much as they work together, they're independent as far as instruction and the programs. And so I laid out how we instruct our band and the times that they meet, so band at the middle school level are grades six through eight, the students meet at alternate days and forty-five minute classes, and you see the list of who the instructors are. So at band, we actually have teaming, we have three instructors in the room that work together with our band students, and that's the opportunity, we can talk more about, you know, how that works and the rationale, but you see the number of students, and so that's how we're delivering band instruction at grades six through eight. And then at the high school, we have two teachers that are teaming with our band classes, where we have two separate classes. So I, I'm sorry, I won't repeat everything, it's on the page that you can read, but just that's the band instructor piece. Strings and orchestra are similar, that starts at fourth grade, okay, and our fourth graders meet twice per week for forty minutes, and then fifth graders are thirty minutes twice per week, and then plus one additional forty-minute period. And so that's at grades four and five, and so that would be at Winnequa in grades four and five, Cottage Grove School in grade four, and then of course, GDS in grade five. And then when you move to grade six, it's more, again, the traditional, we have the orchestra that meets similar to the band on alternate days, and that is team taught with two instructors, where the fourth and fifth grade currently is not team taught, it's an individual instructor with those students. And then the ninth grade through twelfth grade as well, we have two instructors for our high school orchestras, and that is as well team taught. And then the choir, okay, of course, that's separate when it starts in grade six, we have general music up through grade five, and then choir primarily is not team taught, we have had some teaming available to help support a couple sections, but it's not been a universal thing, and that was part of the proposal, is to look at, you know, having consistent teaming there as well. But currently, it's primarily one teacher with, I didn't list on here, but there's been over the past few years, some sections of some additional support. And then likewise, at the high school, one teacher, you know, without any teaming. So what I'd like to talk about, and then I'll let me get to the documents, and then I'll talk about, I guess, my analysis of this and think going forward. What I attached to there on the back is the overall Winnequa-related art schedule, so that includes all related arts, FIAID as well as music and art, just so you have an idea of how those instructional minutes work and how we compute FTEs. So that was just a reference document. And then I have the individual music schedules of all of our music teachers, strings, orchestra, choir, that, the proposed schedules for the next year. And so some of that's handwritten by the principals and a little bit harder to read, but at least it gives you a little bit of idea of what their schedules might look like, and if there are questions, we can go through those. So that's one document that just pertains to, here's our current staffing, how we do things. And then, a second document is attached, is the one that was presented to the board by Pat Dorn back in May, that talks about the music proposal. Okay, and I'll go through that step by step, and I guess my reaction to each of those pieces. And then the final document was just, this was not any kind of formal proposal, this was just to give you an idea, it's one labeled elementary staffing proposal ideas. When we talk about the staffing plan, I'd asked the principals, well, just give me a list of some of the other things that when we look to add or discuss the potential of adding staffing in the future, of areas that you see of needs. And so these have not been all of, some of these we've had discussions, others not, but it's just a list of the numerous areas that our principals see that we also have needs, and I just wanted to point it out in comparison, not to minimize the potential needs in the music department, but we also have many other needs. And so the bottom line is that when we have to make decisions about staffing, it is still a matter of priorities. What has the highest priority for our student needs, and we have to make that decision K-12, so that when we have those discussions, and that's something we've talked about, we need to have more rigorous discussions at the board level perhaps about the background and that decision-making process as opposed to just an end result, here it is. And so that's the background information I provided with you. So before I get into my analysis, any questions on any of the documents about what they are and what they mean?
Okay.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is go through one department at a time, one specific department, okay, and first of all, to talk about the, the, let's start with the strings and orchestra, okay. Part of the recommended proposal was the FTE at Cottage Grove School, and our current need or as far as minutes is a point four-one FTE, okay, and that is computed based on instructional minutes. All of our, any teachers that we have that are part-time or any positions, we look at what a full-time teacher's teaching load is as far as student contact time, and then we just take that percentage and then comes to the FTE. And the proposal was that even though the student contact time was in agreement at point four-one, that there's some additional things that that teacher needs to do that might make it easier to find person by bumping it to point five-zero. Okay, the reason that we haven't done that is, first of all, then we would have to do it for every other related arts teacher, because we also have the same thing at Winnequa School, where the FTE is computed on student contact time, but there's nothing in the proposal to increase that FTE. And so that's something that there are many times that our music teachers and some of their specialties, FTEs are greater than actual student contact time as far as scheduled classes, because there's other contact. And to clarify that is, when you don't have teaming, the traditional way of providing music instruction is besides your whole group instruction, you also have an opportunity for individual or small group lessons, and that's student contact time, and that many times is not on the master's schedule, but it's expected to be scheduled, you know, throughout the day and so on, and so there's a lot of times leeway given in that FTE because of those additional, you know, pieces. And so with this specific position, we did post it as a point four-one, because that's the FT that is needed, but understanding that we also have a need for a general music at the, at GDS, and we've tried to be flexible that we might try to find a person that could teach both, or two separate people, and also be flexible with that FTE if needed. And so depending on, many times with part-time teachers, if, in order to hire someone, if we have a position posted at, say, point four-one, and we have a highly qualified candidate, and our best candidate, and they say, well, I really need to be a point five-O in order to take this position, then sometimes we will do things with adjustments and maybe add some supervision or whatever the case may be, or provide that opportunity for, you know, the individual small group. So there is some flexibility with those, but to simply unilaterally say, we're gonna make this a certain percentage, when that's not the student contact, well, that wouldn't be consistent with what we do with all the other part-time positions. So the FTE is very clear about how we can compute that with student contact time, but with the idea that we might have some flexibility, you know, when we hire part-time, so I don't think, does that make sense? Okay.
It, it kinda makes sense, but I guess when you have that small percentage, then in, and you say it's based totally on instructional minutes, is there, I think we got mixed information, I was confused about this, when it's a point four-one, we're not paying for any prep time at all?
Sure.
We are, okay, we are.
Yeah, so if you look at the master's.
That's what I was trying to figure out, this master's.
Yeah. If you look on, of all those, you know, pack of the master's schedules.
Right, right.
The second master's schedule, there's no name on it, at the top it says point four-one FTE, CGS strings.
Okay, that one.
That would be the schedule for this position.
Okay.
So then a person would have five hundred sixty minutes of teaching time, three hundred sixty minutes of prep time. So essentially, if you're a point four-one teacher, all of our teachers are in the building for eight hours a day. Now, they have a thirty-minute, you know, duty-free lunch, so, but they're in the building for eight hours, so a point four-one would be in point four-one of that time.
Right.
To make it simple, if you're a half-time teacher, you're in the building for four hours.
Right.
Okay, so whatever your student contact time is, subtract that off, the rest is prep time. Now, it's a little bit, we have to be a little bit careful when we talk about prep time, because a full-time teacher has time in the beginning of the day and end of the day where they don't have students, that's not really called prep time, because you're in the building, but you, you know, it's, it's just not factored in. The prep time, when we call it that, is during the time that the students are in the building to make sure you're basically duty-free, that you're not assigning students during that time. But nonetheless, there is prep time for all part-time teachers, that's how it's computed.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, and so, now is the expectation that that person can do every one of those planning duties within that? No, we all know that all teachers teach well more than eight hours a day, and so there is expectation that you do some things in August prior to the school year, as well as, you know, evenings and so on, but there is, you know, ample time there. And then we also give a lot of flexibility with part-time, about working with the teacher, do you want a lunch in there or not, you know, depending on when those student schedules are. Sometimes it's best, you know, they just prefer to come in right when they start teaching and take the prep at the end of the day, you know, so that there's always flexibility there. Okay. Okay, so in any case, that is still a little bit open-ended. Here's where we would like to go ideally. What I found is that back several years ago, we had, and first of all, before GDS was built, and we had strings at fourth and fifth grade, when Cottage Grove School had through fifth grade, one instructor that did the fourth and fifth grade strings. And then even after Glacial Dremelin was built, we had for a number of years, a instructor that did the fourth and fifth grade. Through budget reductions, okay, essentially that position was eliminated and other people were assigned, so one of the current staff picked up fifth grade, another staff member picked up fourth grade. And so there was absolute reduction of staff, and I think that's part of the proposal is, well, we'd like to get back to where we were at, you know, at some point. I will say, the ideal would be fulfilling that, those positions, is to have a single person. It is extremely hard to find a part-time strings teacher. We've been successful in the past, we've had, since I've been here and even before I was here, we've had highly qualified people fill those positions, but they've done it in a number of different ways, whether it be an individual teacher just part-time, or picking up part-time in another building and so on. So that continues to be an issue, and that's something that we do need to look and really strongly consider, do we combine the fourth and fifth grade into a position, which would be really close to a full-time, and that's one of those that would make sense, that if it comes up to a point nine-something, sure, you round it to a one-O and make it a full-time. But then that has implications on the rest of the department, okay, which may be positive, and as part of the long-range proposal is, that would allow them more band time, okay, and one of the reasons that I was not prepared to, you know, go along or even, you know, make a decision about this recommendation at this time, is that has implications at the high school as well, and this proposal was really discussed only with the middle school principal. And so I've had some discussions with Paul Brown, but that's something that's a longer discussion we need to talk about. So the bottom line is that I think there's, there absolutely is merit, you know, to this, and that's what I've told the music teachers as I met with them, that yes, this absolutely deserves consideration, but the process is absolutely critical, that we need to look at how we're delivering our music instruction, and then, you know, determine what those staffing needs are, and not to say that this is wrong, but then it is a matter of weighing that against our other needs, and coming back and having that discussion and making the decision about that. I am confident that the staffing that we have right now, we are doing an excellent job. To say, could we do more and better things? Yeah, I think there is an opportunity. I absolutely preach, I didn't say it earlier, you know, Jen Bustin's comments, you know, earlier, I think there's not any question that the people in the district, and I'll, I shouldn't speak for board members, but that we absolutely want and support the arts programs and realize how important that is. The question is, in order to have a strong program, what are those real needs, and can we have a strong program, you know, with what we have, or do we, are we missing some things, can we provide even a better opportunity with some additional staffing? And I think that's a complex question. We may very well come back, you know, next year and say, yeah, this is something we want to recommend, or it might be a modification, but the process, we didn't follow through with that, we have to have a lot of people involved. One of the things that I committed to doing when, in talking to teachers, is I honestly have not sat in the middle school band and watched the three teachers work together, and not that I'm gonna be the decision-maker here, this is gonna be a team collective, you know, effort, but I do want to see that, so I really do have that understanding about how they team together, and I absolutely trust that they do it very well, and our principals have, of course, seen that, and they have talked to that. So I think the teaming approach has been proven very effective at the middle and high school level for the band program, it's been, I think, proven very effective at the, for the, the.
Strings.
Strings and orchestra, and the vocal music's a little bit different, and I, what I understand, that it's not nearly as common, but it has been successful and is in some schools, you know, in talking to Lori Ninherniak about how that program works, she does have an opportunity, you know, to meet with a small group, but she also has an accompanist, you know, and that provides time for her. So that is a similar concept to teaming, that allows her to work with individuals or small groups, and Jen Bustin doesn't have that opportunity at the middle school. So I will say this, we absolutely do need to do something with middle school choir, okay? It is not reasonable to continue to have the staffing the way that we have it now. The reduction that was made, I do believe, has negatively impacted the middle school choir program. And, but I think there has to be more discussion and research about the best way of dealing with that, whether it be some teaming, you know, that we do still have some opportunity for what we call the gigs, the small group instruction or, and assessment and so on, and we know that we don't like pulling kids out of the core academic classes, for that matter, not out of the other classes as well, but I think there might be some alternatives that we can explore a little bit further with that. So at this point, even though we have a schedule for this upcoming school year, there is still a little bit of flexibility, we still haven't hired that part-time general music teacher yet that we're looking for, and so I just met with Renee Tennant about that, had a discussion earlier this week about some possible options there, and so that schedule still might see a real slight adjustment. What we would like to do for next year is to give some additional assistance, at least allow to have someone available to work with Jen on some of those sections, as many as possible, and then we want to come up with a permanent solution, you know, moving forward. It may be going to the teaming, it might provide an opportunity for gigs or a combination, but I think it does, we need some further discussion and then make a decision, this is the way that we're gonna go. So, bottom line, we have the issue with the strings for fourth and fifth grade, that we have the challenge of trying to find quality part-time people, that that's an ongoing issue that we need to deal with. Middle school choir, we absolutely need to address and have, we can't just simply say no gigs and not provide any other additional support, so we definitely need to do something with middle school choir. And then, to me, the discussion about if we add, do decide to increase staff for the strings to free up more band time, we need to make sure we have the six-twelve discussion about that, about it's clear, you know, how that would happen. And so I've committed to beginning those discussions right away in the fall, through the curriculum and instruction process, and so that we're not waiting till next spring, that we'll have a recommendation on that. Actually, all of our staffing, we want to have a place, you know, by January next year, as we begin the budget process with those priorities. And in the meantime, the most pressing need, again, is to find some additional support for that middle school choir, which we have had some, but we need to continue to examine that. I went around in a little bit of a circle there, some areas, so, and we have a number of music teachers here that I'm sure can, you know, clarify anything, especially if I didn't make it clear or even visited anything, like make sure that the board at least is fully informed on that.
Can I clarify one thing, Dan? When you say we have three band people in the room at the middle school, technically we're only teamed two pairs. I was in the sixth grade all this year on my prep and my planning time because of severe emotional needs of some kids, and we see more and more of that. I often was sitting one on two, one on three, one on one, trying to serve the kids.
Okay. So the master's schedule, it seems.
If you have three of us in a room on a regular basis, it's because of the needs of the kids.
Okay. I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. It's, because if you look, because we're one on one.
Well, I also wondered, one of the budget reductions back when we did that massive budget cut several years ago, was to have the choir teacher add teaching fifth grade general music.
Yeah.
And that was a very significant additional piece of workload for choir, and it eliminates the time when you might do gigs or do a small group instruction. So I guess I bet, I feel like that should be on your radar too.
Yeah.
Maybe that would, could help this solution if we could eliminate that.
Absolutely, and I guess I want to be clear, and I'll speak for Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, if we don't have any gigs or pull-out, the actual instructional time that Jen has is reasonable, three sections of choir and the general music. The issue is, exactly, she's not allowed to do.
Right.
The gigs, and so the instruction, so the challenge is, you know, you see the numbers, there are fifty, sixty kids and one teacher.
Right.
At all times, that's.
And I, and I think. And I, and I think vocal music in some people's minds, the voice is an instrument, and I think that, so I think in some people's minds, they cloud that with thinking, well, their choir, they're all singing. Well, they're singing in different voices, and I know Jen does work with solo and ensemble and that kind of thing. So to me, there's a strong argument for that, I'm just wanting to support that.
Appreciate that. I guess the other thing I will say, that when we make decisions about the staffing, we talked about, well, what other school districts do, and that, we have to be careful because there's a lot of different models out there, and when you look at what they do, it doesn't mean what they're doing is necessarily optimal either. You know, there are a lot of, you know how budgets are in with public education, there are a lot of schools that would love to have more staffing, and so I don't, we have to be careful not to say, well, we've got more staffing than they, so we're fine. We, I think, need to focus on ourselves and the instruction that we're doing in our programs.
Well, part of what brought us to the table is, we were seeing staffing proposals come through, and we took severe cuts, and have never recouped any of them. And that's where, and then because of the cuts, we got this hodgepodge of people all over the place doing all kinds of different things. And even if you restored Janice to full-time band, we'd be down 0.5, because when Doug retired, we lost, and we lost another class.
Carrie?
Thank you for this, this is awesome. There's a, just a little side note on one of the sheets about Anna and Ben at Winnequa volunteering to do fifth grade honors choir. So going forward, are we looking to pay them for that? I mean, and then also, is that something that's just happening in Manona, or is that something that would want to happen in Manona and Cottage Grove?
I gotta be honest, I don't know enough about that, that's something that I don't know how to find out.
Yeah, that caught my eye.
It's something that they do on their prep time, I believe. I mean, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I know it's not happening in sixth grade at GDS because I didn't do it. So it's something that could happen, but if it did, it would be out of prep time? So, yeah, I mean, Jen, to your question...
Yeah, so I was asking, going forward, are we looking to pay someone to do that?
Is it an equity between those two communities?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
And then could, is this an opportunity to look at that kind of structurally and say, we don't expect our teachers to be volunteering to do another class?
Right.
Because they happen to be there and can sacrifice their prep time, but this is a curriculum thing that we want to offer. So that caught my eye.
It could possibly be something that would, that would boost a, an ATE to something more reasonable to attract staff. We don't have anybody right at home.
Yeah, thank you.
At home.
Yeah, thanks. Because, of course, that would be of interest to me, probably lots of parents.
And I agree, and that, I think, is a great example of something we need to decide. Is that part of our curriculum and what we're offering? And if it is, absolutely, it should not be voluntary, it should be paid. We need to make, and we kind of talk about, how do programs start? And many times they start by a teacher volunteering or student interest.
I'm all for getting it launched and then supporting it.
Yeah.
So we might be at the point with that one where they have students who love it and we could now support it more in a sustained way.
And let me just make this general comment about staffing. Manona Grove is no different than so many districts, it's been cut, cut, cut for so long, and part of it is, when we start talking about, and when I meet with the principals about staffing, it's a new world to say, oh, add staff? And so the process really hasn't been in place to consider that. And so that's something that we kind of learned as well, you know, as we went through this. So that, I meant, we're committed to have certain discussions early, you know, this next year, and really reassessing everything we have, because it's still going to be, as much as we're so thrilled and thankful for the referendum money, we still are going to have to make choices, and it is a matter of comparison and making priorities.
Well, I was just going to say, another example of something similar to this was, we had teachers voluntarily coaching math teams, they were not getting paid for it because it wasn't in the additive schedule for a number of years. And finally, there was an opportunity to revisit that schedule, and I believe now they are...
Yes.
Now they're paid for that, but they did it a lot, a long time on their own, just because they wanted to do it. For a long time, I think the high school jazz band, years ago when my oldest child was in band, I don't think that was even a paid additive originally.
I attended middle school for a couple of years.
Yeah, so sometimes those are extra things, and then they do get looked at, but there does have to be a process, and it does have to always be looked at in the context of everything. With the additives, that was the case too. It was like, okay, well, we have some additives we're not using anymore, so here's some money we could put into that. And so it all has to be, the process does matter, and I really appreciate that you're starting off the year, taking a good, hard look at this and seeing what we can do, yeah, differently.
And I absolutely appreciate that people volunteered to do so, but I wanted to make a point of bringing it up tonight in the context of, if you're looking at this, now's the time to rein in some of those volunteer things that are maybe unfair to ask people to continue to do.
As long as I'm talking about staffing, I'll mention this, as you know, we made a pretty major modification to the additive schedule a couple of years ago, and that was something that there'd been a committee for many years. And then, since that, I think, you mentioned, the math coach was, math team coaches won and a couple of small changes were made, and we actually have a couple others that have come forward, so we are reviewing it next week at our admin team meeting, and we will be coming to the board with that discussion with a couple of minor adjustments to it. But I think that is a point that we need to, I'll remind the principals, let's look at everything, and I think we're so used to this, we've always done it.
Right.
Well, it's time to kind of start an overall assessment about, is this the right way to do things?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else under your, I don't know what to talk about. Good. In that case, we're moving on to Director of Instruction Report. Lisa, I was going to talk about the curriculum renewal cycle.
Hi, so I guess I'll staircasey, there's been so much passion and sort of personal feelings in this room tonight about things that are so near and dear to so many people's hearts, so it's a lot to take in and process. So I would just say, like, you know, kudos to all of you for saying that this is something you want to do to make the district better, is help lead in a way that throws these really significant boulders in your lab and asks you to wrestle with them. Charter schools, music programs, staffing, and now we're going to share a little bit about curriculum, but I'm equally as passionate about curriculum as maybe others are about other things.
We're a passionate gang.
Yeah, there's just a lot, I runneth over with that tonight. Also, I guess I'll tie a little bit of my beginning comments to what some of you were just talking about, how important the process is. In many ways, you know, it is so much better to be proactive than reactive. How do you make sure that nothing starts on fire rather than running in with a fire hose to put out the fire? My husband, who works in manufacturing, spends most of his time doing preventative maintenance on things, and so the machines are running perfectly, and you think, why are you paying any attention to it? It's running perfectly. But without that preventative maintenance, bad things can happen, and then you end up in worse trouble than before. So what I'm going to speak with you tonight about a curriculum review and renewal process is, in many ways, a way that we can do preventative maintenance on our curriculum and instruction and make sure that we don't have to run in somewhere with a hose. I think sometimes when we talk about staffing flare-ups or maybe instructional issues, a lot of that can come under the umbrella of some preventative maintenance with a process in place. And again, just one year in the district, so I can't really speak to the history in it, but I am excited to help lead going forward in a way that will bring teachers to a table, administrators to a table, all of us really talking about how we can make sure that we're doing the best for the kids every day with what we have. So I shared some documents with you, actually I shared them with Joyce, and I think she shared them with you, that really are the key components to this process. And the first is an actual calendar that talks about every content area and gives it a place each year in the process, and also talks about what happens every year. So it looks a little bit like this, your document, and it's a six-year curriculum cycle, and you'll see that, again, for example, in this upcoming school year, we have science and our counseling department, ACP is our Academic and Career Plans, that is something that the state has asked every school district to have in place for the start of the 2017 school year. But science and our counseling would be up for curriculum renewal. English Language Arts is in a year of implementation, as well as math, health and FIA Ed, career and tech ed, world languages and fine arts. And then social studies falls into the evaluation and review year. And then you'll see that it shifts every year over until in the six-year cycle, everyone has been in an evaluation and a review year, and everyone has been in a curriculum renewal year, and then you start over. So you're really looking at having the opportunity for teachers from 4K through 12, who are leaders in that curriculum area or that content area, to come together, have conversations about the curriculum, have conversations about standards, big ideas, essential content, and then scope and sequence. And what I'm alluding to is the second point here, the focus areas for each year. And that looked a little bit like this, or probably exactly like this. And again, if you're in an evaluation review year, you are looking at your programming and instruction, you're talking about what is currently happening and what you would like to see happen, you're looking at exemplary programs from Dane County or around the state or even nationally. Really, it's your chance to, again, I think Jen talked earlier about having taught for seventeen years and having to really reflect on music and what she did gave her that chance to step back and look anew at her work. This is an opportunity sort of to do that every six years, to really look anew at what you're doing. And so after that evaluation and review year, you really have a sense of what is going to be the foundational underpinnings for the work that you're going to do. And that rolls right into your curriculum renewal year, where you then are looking at, again, what do you want for your scope and sequence? How are we going to identify for teachers what it is that is most important for kids to know and be able to do? How will they show that they are learning? What is going to be the criteria for judgment to say that they are meeting their learning targets? And also to provide lots of options for students to walk different paths to the learning target. And I think that's a really important point when we talk about maybe some changes over the years and how curriculum is thought of, and I can get to that a little bit more, but I guess I'll touch into, I think it was Andrea's point, who had mentioned when she was speaking about education and charter schools and our traditional schools, and thinking that most often you teach to the middle and you see who gets it, and if you didn't get it, well, then we have a little something reactively to do. This proactive approach that really talks about how our students learn, we need to make sure that in this work, we're meeting all students' needs, the range of learners, and not just a middle. And that's a lot of hard work, but it is the work that our kids deserve and our teachers are up for it, so we'll do it. The third document that was shared with you was the actual instructional materials assessment review, because in this conversation about, you know, what we're teaching and how we're teaching it becomes, it's necessary to talk about the materials. And again, this is something that teachers would use, asking them to review different textbooks, it could be things other than text as well that could fall into it, but traditionally it can be a text, knowing that in the end, the text is not the curriculum, and I'll repeat that again later on. But you do need something to help guide instruction, and we're not making everything up every day, every teacher in a different way, there are some things that guide the curriculum. And so this is just an example of what we would look at. And again, the criteria for the assessment includes things like materials worked toward goals within the four domains of anti-bias education, that we're making sure that the materials address concepts and themes that are essential, rather than always focusing on just sort of discrete facts. So there is an opportunity for things to fall into project-based or inquiry-type modes, that we're looking at things like content being presented in a way that is adaptable to a wide range of learners. So the content isn't just, this is the only way to present it, but it's open to teachers to use what's best in their practice to make sure that it's working for all kids. Any questions on those documents? So I also wanted to share with you again sort of three really important conversations that go into curriculum renewal processes. And so the first is that we are a standards-based district, we follow Common Core in our English Language Arts and Math curriculum, we have state standards in all the other areas, and the standards, whether it's Common Core or a different standard, in the end, what standards do is they help guide the learning targets. They aren't the curriculum either, and again, it's not, here's a standard and it tells you exactly how you teach it. The standard is giving you that goal that you want to get your students to. So it is important to have standards, and it is important to talk about what's essential in them. We know that there's always more standards than can ever be covered in K-12 education, so teachers have to use, you know, their expertise to say, these are the things that are really important in our community for our kids to know and be able to do, and develop that K-12 scope and sequence. And then the third point on here, textbooks, they are not the curriculum. No one is expecting a teacher to open the first, the cover and go page by page through a textbook and say, this is what our kids are getting. Truly, it is the standards that are defining the learning targets. The textbooks may be the material that helps you get students to hit that target, but quite often there are also supplementary things that are used to help students hit the target, and that's where that sort of artistry and teaching comes in, because you don't want to have teachers with no resources in terms of hitting targets, but you do want them to also know that they are not handcuffed to one particular method or one particular way to help kids learn. A second point in the curriculum process is the idea of backwards design. So again, you need to know where you're going before you can start your journey to get there. And, you know, I mean, there's lots of adage about that, if you don't know where you're going, you never get there, things like that. But you start from the standards, you identify what really is essential for students, and that, when I, when I use the word enduring up there, we're not looking at things that are fleeting or just factual, really, it's sort of those meaningful pieces that are the key to your content area that you want kids ten years, twenty years to still say, like, that matters that I know it. And so it is not about a coverage mentality, and it's not just about fun activities either, it truly is about being very intentional in how you're engaging students. But it is also, and the last point up there, is that it's about multiple pathways. And I think if the accountability state of education and the increased emphasis on testing because of accountability has led to anything, it has led us to understand that you cannot all walk the same path and be successful, that there is a need to be more inclusive of all kinds of learners and to understand that it doesn't mean that's a disability, it's just variability is the reality, and so we have to be prepared for variability in all of our classrooms. And then the last sort of piece of our process is universal design for learning, the principles that are foundational to that. And that has to do with, again, being proactively rather than reactively. So when I was doing my teacher prep program, I, you know, you would design one lesson, and you would talk about the activities that the students would engage in and how you would assess them, but sometimes that assessment conversation didn't come until after you taught it, and then you're like, okay, so what did I teach them? And then you create the test. Also, it meant that kids were all sort of getting the same experience, and, you know, you'd have confidence that that was a good experience, and so everyone should just enjoy this, this magical lesson. But the reality is that for all students to be successful... But the reality is that for all students to be successful, there has to be some different ways that kids are accessing the curriculum. And so we have to be prepared for that. And if our preparation says that we're first going to engage kids and then see who gets it and who doesn't, we're then stuck in that reactive mode. So we know, even if we don't know every student's name on our class list, we know we're going to have a range of learners. It's just a fact. The more you know about your kids, the easier it is to be proactive when you're planning for them. But even if you don't know who they are, you know that there needs to be some variability in the lesson so that you can meet all the students' needs. And the last point up there is, again, that average is a myth. And so we have to make sure that our classrooms are really inclusive to the broad range of learners so that we can do our best for all kids. And I think this goes back to the charter school conversation, and many of the things that you are hearing such a strong voice that, you know, really being proponents for is, we know our kids want to learn in different ways, help us make that a reality. There's a lot of work to do in those conversations in classrooms. One of the things that I've taken away from my time in the charter school planning sessions is that sometimes what we're talking about is the amount of time spent using certain approaches in education, so perhaps project-based learning. I think that it would be wrong to say that never happens in our schools. That's just false. It does happen. But how often does it happen? And if you're going to create a school that says, you know, a hundred percent of the time, kids are doing project-based learning, that's one thing. Could we say that right now about our current schools? No, we're not prepared to say a hundred percent of time, kids would be in project-based learning. But could we get there? We can get there. So it's what we value, the approaches we value, the training we provide our teachers. And again, back to what is we want our kids to know and be able to do, and how are we going to have them show it? And having our teachers have an opportunity every single year to spend time looking at their curriculum and their instruction, not just when a fire, you know, ignites and you have to do something dramatic. So that constant maintenance and those constant conversations, K-12 involving our teachers, I think are really going to lead us in great ways. Back to the comment about passion, the charter school folks, there's so much passion in those planning sessions, and many of that came from our current teachers. And it was really energizing to hear what they were thinking and how they were speaking. And I think we can capture that. And I think there were similar voices to that in our classrooms right now who didn't get involved in the charter planning. So there's just a lot of potential to do really great things for all of our kids. And part of it is we need to put the structures in place or the process in place to make sure that we're carefully mining all the potential that we have so we can be successful for all of our kids.
Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, just, we've, you know, we've been working with the superintendent on his annual evaluation and with him. And I'd ask you, what kind of measures, what kind of indicators, what kind of numbers or whatever are we going to have to know that your very beautiful explanation of the Great New World is going to, that we know it's there, or we're short of it, or we, you know?
Well, I hope the nuts and bolts of it would be that we're going to see more and more of our kids performing at their highest levels.
How do we know that?
Well, how are you going to measure that? One way, I mean, not my preferred way, but one way would be achievement tests. You know, you could look at standardized test scores. But I think other ways, Dean, is to see how kids are continuing to engage deeply in certain courses, how they are able to talk about their learning, less emphasis on what grade they got, but more conversation about how much they're loving what they're learning and...
Well, that works, that works well, perhaps at an individual or classroom level. When you get to your level and you're looking across grades, what will you be looking at? But as a board, how do we know that the system is performing adequately or well or superlatively?
Yeah. Well, a couple other measures, Dean, would be talking with teachers. What I've heard is that they have a deep desire to connect with one another. Teachers at second grade at Cottage Grove are wondering what the second grade teachers in Winnequa are doing. They don't have much time to collaborate or have those conversations. So one thing would be making sure that with a process like this in place, we've got some of those conversations happening. I think you're going to see increased investment in their work. You're going to see increase in morale. You're going to see teachers feeling like they're, they have more ownership of their work that's important to them. Survey them, ask them, where it is now, what will it be a year from now? I would hope that you would see any kind of climate survey increase in how they're feeling about their work when they're empowered to do really great work. And again, back to students.
Well, that would be a satisfaction or a climate measure. What about, what about academic performance or student measures? Besides a happiness measure?
Well, I mean, that's what I started with. I said, it's not my preferred measure, but you can definitely go to a standardized test and see that those are going to, you know, that's ultimately, right? If you want to say, we think increased ACT scores, or increased MAP scores, or increased Forward Badger, whatever the next iteration might be. Like, that's how we want to make sure that we're showing that we've prepared kids well. If you've got teachers who are invested in putting really solid curriculum in front of kids and they're talking about best practices with instruction, that's going to be where you're going to see some improvement.
Carrie?
Thank you for this, because it's interesting to me. It's not my knowledge base. So the question I have about universal design for learning is how that gets overlaid in a situation, I'm just thinking about our experiences with math and maybe as one just like way of helping you understand my frame. And it's this way, as my own child in a math class with different material than in different other kids' math classes, thinking about digital drama, sets up multiple different teams. And so this curriculum created for all learners to access the first time the concept is taught. You would definitely say, no matter how bright the child is, they're not going to get all the concepts the first time it's taught.
Well, they're a master.
So help me underst, you're right. So help me understand, like, what universal design for learning, how it's different than...
Sure. So some students, they aren't even on the on-ramp when a teacher is first presenting something. And so what we're saying is we need to make sure that all of our kids, even if it doesn't mean that it's at the exact same level, that all of our kids are able to engage in conversation around whatever the learning target is in meaningful ways so that they're moving closer to that target. Not being completely left out, which is sort of the traditional ways that teaching has happened for a long time. I planned a lesson for the middle. As soon as I opened my mouth and started, I'm sorry that you were completely tuned out because none of it resonated with you, but I have a lesson to give and I'm on the road for forty-five minutes. And then at the end, you know, I might check for understanding, and I'm sorry, but you didn't even get in the car. And so what UDL is really talking about is how can you make sure that people are able to, in whatever way, access the learning so that they're growing? Doesn't mean everybody's growing the same rate at the same time, but that you're not leaving anyone behind. So if I know Johnny may have some auditory issues and my lesson primarily was going to be lecture-based, I better make sure that I've got a different way for Johnny to engage. Doesn't mean I'm not going to offer my lecture, but I have at least some way that I'm modifying something or I'm offering an accommodation to help Johnny engage in that. So whether that's a visual representation of what I'm saying, or do you see?
Kind of studying learners. I'm thinking about what you're saying, which is in the content. I was thinking a bit more in the actual content of what's being, as opposed to universal design referring to the style of it and making sure that multiple people in the room can learn in different ways.
Yeah.
That's what I hear you saying now more. So maybe that's not quite what I was first thinking.
The learning targets don't have to be different learning targets necessarily. But what we can talk about is if we know that we want students to be able to use persuasive techniques in, use persuasive techniques to convince an audience of, you know, your particular point of view. Some students might be able to do that really well in writing. And so that's a perfectly legitimate way to show their knowledge in that. Others might say, you know what, I could really do a really great iMovie and also convince you to think the way I do, and so I'm going to do it this way. And someone else might say, I'm going to do a performance piece because I really think that that speaks to how I can express myself. So sometimes the variation is in modes of expression. And so it's just saying like, that's okay. Because so often, we've thought about education as there's just one way. And we need to open the door to multiple ways. Doesn't mean that we have lessened a target or lowered an expectation or that we're holding people back either. But truly, it's trying to say, if I can anticipate that you might need this or this, then I should have that prepared for you so that you can do your best in this time that we have together.
That makes sense. Thank you. Because in all those cases, you'd still have the student understand how to be persuasive in there. It's just the way they did it. And so I was just thinking about my understanding of the word curriculum was different than what you're describing, so thank you.
Okay, sure.
Lisa, if I may, as a practitioner, I would also say that the whole assessment piece is huge for design because you want to know the campers in your classroom, and you want to know that as much ahead of time as possible. But just being prepared for multimodal and knowing that you've got different pacing. So one of the pieces that I think is huge is formative assessment. And you're doing pre-assessment in lots of different modes so that you know where your kids are, so that you can be responsive to that. So I just, I think that's a piece of the philosophy.
No, formative assessment, again, you know, when Dean's saying, what measure are you going to use? Again, you've got summative assessments that are, in many cases, not the classroom-based, but external to us, state standardized tests. But you also have classroom summative assessments. You've got grades. But I think that when you talk about the level of success and how students are engaging in the work, the formative assessment gives you so much more information than anything you're going to get in some of those other measures. But that's, I mean, we're still held accountable with those other measures as well.
Susan?
Lisa, one of the things that I was kind of listening for, and I maybe just kind of missed it in the material. In the curriculum renewal and review cycle, one of the things we've talked about is curriculum alignment, and you alluded to that. For instance, in 4K, we have multiple sites of 4K. In all the other grades, up to sixth grade, we have two separate sites. And one of the things I think we've struggled with, and maybe the site's affected, maybe it hasn't, but it's getting the curriculum aligned, so we're saying, so are you going to be... So really, I guess it's two questions. One, are you going to be looking at that in this review? And/or is that a separate thing you're going to be working on that you can then come talk to us about as well? Because that is of high interest in this district.
Yeah.
That is something that we've been looking for for, I want to say, seven years. And I know that's a challenge for you.
The 4K through 12 scope and sequence, I think, is what you're talking about. And that is in this document. So that's part of the work of the, so I use the word maintenance in some ways. If I had to describe the two phases of the curriculum renewal and review, I'd say that in years two, three, four, and five, you're doing a lot of that maintenance of things. But year six and year one, you're really looking at more of like the heavy lifting. And that's when you are making sure that, you know, you've got the appropriate standards in place and that you've got your strong 4K-12 scope and sequence. And that's not every single teacher in the district doing that in that grade level or content area. But that is really strong work done by a select committee of representatives from every building from 4K through 12. So you, like, science is this year. So we will have science reps from every building, from every grade level, who are coming together to talk about their 4K through 12 standards and the scope and sequence. So we're not going to have different standards or learning targets, expectations at Winnequa than we do at Taylor Prairie or Cottage Grove.
Okay. And then, and that's really great to know. Because I know, I mean, sometimes it's as simple as, hey, these fifth graders are getting swimming lessons and these fifth graders aren't. That's curriculum.
Right.
And that's, that becomes a factor. And it's not always that question, but that was an easy one that was visible to a lot of people. So we were going to get a question. Or, again, the one we keep getting kind of whacked with is when they get into sixth grade, what they did in this one area at this school and what they did in this one area at this school. In fact, we've talked to you about that.
Sure.
But again, trying to get aligned. And I think continuing to report back on the work that you're doing with the staff to get it aligned as well. Because understanding in the same building, you can have six different teachers teaching sixth grade, and they can be doing it entirely differently. But that, again, goes to that curriculum. Are they meeting the curriculum standards? And then, are we investigating technology? Again, now, we Skype and video conference from all over the United States on healthcare issues. So it seemed to me that we should be able to work out a way that we can put all the fifth grade teachers in touch with each other X amount of times a year to have discussions together. And they don't have to be in the same building. They can be in their own classroom to do that, to have those discussions. Are we working on ways to put all of our, understanding, putting all the science teachers in one class? And I mean, even simpler than that, on the fifth grade teachers in touch with each other so that they're thinking along the same lines?
We are. And again, that's, that is part of this as well. So when I talked about the teachers asking for those conversations with their colleagues, that's something that needs to happen. And not just when you're up for a new reading adoption. Like, that has to happen yearly, regularly, multiple times. So we know we have an opportunity this year already for some of those large-scale meetings with all grade levels and content areas. But we're going to, we're going to keep looking for more and more and creative ways using, I mean, on some, to some degree, it's not just about, you know, a technology hurdle and not wanting to come from Winnequa to the high school, you know, to meet. Sometimes it's even just the same time, same place, like sort of that synchronous meeting where everybody's available at the same time. And so we'll look at ways that we can continue to bring people together to have those conversations, but we have some of that planned for already.
I think that's great. And then, again, I know, we've talked about this as a board, and that is that we all have, as Carrie kind of alluded to, we all have kind of different experiences based on having had children in the district and opportunities that were up to the district. But one of the things you said to us today was the goal being more kids achieving at their highest level. And I'll continue to advocate for learning and curriculum, kind of like you're doing with the AP, but to meet the needs of all students. So for instance, in sixth grade, you effectively have a minimum of three choices of math levels, three. So you can have regular sixth grade math, you can have pre-algebra, or you might be able to do algebra, actually, four, if you can do the geometry at that level. So again, to me, that certainly sounds like, in that environment, based on the curriculum, you are appearing to meet the kids achieving at different levels because you're offering them the opportunity. Now, I don't, again, the more you want to talk to us about that and what you offer, the more knowledgeable we are in that arena.
So I'll just say two things quickly. One is that even if you have sixth graders in an algebra class, they all don't learn the same way. And so part of what we're talking about is making sure that students are, even in that situation, you'd say, well, they're all advanced learners because they're in sixth grade and... you'd say, well, they're all advanced learners because they're in sixth grade and they're in algebra. But they still all will not access that curriculum in a uniform way. So it's, so what we're talking about in terms of like universal design or things like that, it really will even bear fruit in that situation. The other thing that I would just mention is that sometimes it's not always about having another level, like a higher level class, but really making sure that you're able to present the learning target in a way that for some students who you know, again, that proactive, I know that Johnny's going to be able to pick this up really quickly. So I have to know that I have, you know, additional, like, more sophisticated way to have him look at this. Or if the learning target has to do with showing that you can summarize and pull out key ideas, I may give Johnny more complex text to use where I know Sally needs a different text that she can access more readily and still be successful in the skill. And so that she can summarize and pull out key ideas, but she's not going to read War and Peace, but Johnny might. So, you know, that's just another example of how you can have kids at multiple levels working towards the same learning target with the same skills. And you're meeting their needs because you know about your kids.
Lisa?
First of all, excellent presentation. I think you laid out an exemplary process for this renewal cycle. The whole, the system, the assessment, and so on. I think that's, that I'm very pleased to see it laid out this way and see what the thought that's gone into it. My question is by using the assessment tool, I mean, we're gonna use that assessment tool when we look at new curriculum, correct? What are we doing? My question would be, and maybe I would make a suggestion, that you use this with existing curriculum first. And then, once you've, and maybe you have plans for this, but once we've got the new curriculum in after a year or two, then you ask this assessment, use this assessment on that existing curriculum. Dean's question is, how do we see improvement? And one of these things, for me, in this area, would be longitudinally follow that data using this assessment tool and see that it's improving over time. That there's this valuation of, yeah, the stuff that we happen to have in-house is getting, you know, the, the staff believes it's doing it. It's, it's ranking higher up on this, and it's based on this reference.
So thank you for that suggestion. I hadn't thought about using it on current curriculum, just using it going forward when we're looking at materials adoption. But part of that process involves looking at what the current state is. And that is, like, when we talk about the standards that we want to embrace, what we think is important for kids to know and be able to do, do our current materials help us get there? And in some cases, you're gonna have teachers say, some of it does, or maybe all of it does, or maybe we need some new things. And that's when they look at the materials assessment review.
Yes, you are gonna do this evaluation review. And I'm curious about the, the tools you're gonna use to do that. As that goes on, I would like, I'd love to see some of that data as it becomes available.
Sure.
And as you're tracking over time. And, you know, it'd be worthwhile to say how successful this process is when I compare the evaluation of the material we had before and the material we have after. And if it's not improving, then it tells you that the process some, needs to be adjusted somehow to get a better outcome, right? So that we have this longitudinal data that we can get after. But otherwise, I think it's an exemplary process.
Thank you.
Susan?
Well, I think one of the other pieces, and you talked about it, we talked about the, and we've talked about this over the last several years, the need for collaboration time. I, I think, my experience with our teachers, as a teacher and from the more limited view from the board, is that they're constantly looking for ways to improve what they're doing. And that particularly with the whole PDSA cycles and the, the more structured continuous improvement that we've been doing these last several years, they're constantly, you know, I, the, just the emphasis, I did something years ago, understanding by design, which is real similar to this, where you really have that target, the target skills that you want to be aligned by design, the check that I'm gonna bring in. You have specific skills that you're embedding in your content. And so you're constantly looking at ways to teach those better or to see, you know, if a student doesn't learn in this unit, how are you repeating it for them in the next unit so they get the other option? And that's where that collaboration with teachers and constantly looking for different materials, different activities, different strategies, that's, that is the value of our professional development opportunities. And it's one of the things that, we've talked about this before too, and we have those in-service opportunities and parents don't like them because they have to figure out where. But that's part of what they're for, is to allow that kind of time. So I think a lot of what you're asking for, Peter, does go on a general basis. You don't necessarily need hard data or a form to make that work the best. It really is in that conversation. And, you know, talking about what strategies are working for you with what child and that, all of that. So it's constantly evolving. And I, I think this is very well laid out. I also appreciate very much your presentation. And I was, when I was looking at this document for evaluating textbooks, I was thinking, the last time I had to help select a textbook, we didn't have anything quite like this. And this would've been great because it's just a very nice way to go through and...
Good. Great.
So thank you.
Dean?
I'd just like to couple in some statements, a couple of my other ones. I, I think when they're asking for data, that always suggests that some kind of standardized test. Having lived and worked and had my kids go to school in Finland, there's not one standardized test from the time the kid enters earliest school to the time they leave. There's no, there's no so-called number that you can, that you can do. But this, but the teachers are all trained in formative. You know, they all have, you have shared goals, you have shared outcomes. And they learn to have the collaborative time to, to, you know, cross-fertilize their data and to find out what they're doing. And they, and they can, and they can, they can assure the supervisor, the principal, that, you know, that so many of their kids have reached these levels and so forth. And through the formative assessment, but without having a percentile rank or that, that, that we are at the 68 percentile of all schools in America and that kind of stuff, which is nonsense anyway. But, but if you, but I, I would suggest you really, I, I know you're, I know they're doing that, but it does require some collaborative time. And it does require some cost across training and competent vocabulary and that kind of... Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need a five-minute break?
No.
Okay. Keep going. Jay, board reports. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Jeff, community engagements.
After a little hiatus, it was kind of a mellow first meeting. We just kind of talked about the state of the district and redoing and relooking at and updating the communication plan. We'll have more to report in later meetings if we get more in bits.
No, I'm happy about that meeting.
So what did you guys talk about?
State of the district and how we're gonna update the communication plan and some other things we can do. It was a quick, short meeting, it was just kind of a, what do you wanna do right here?
Update on communication plan.
One thing that was fun for me is to see the tangible plan spelled out with the tactics underneath each of the areas for internal and external communication that we have. And I was, one of the tools, I think, was very successful in getting individual school newsletters launched. And there's some other themes within that that I think are ripe for us to follow up on now. So I, I think it's 1415 was the first year of that particular plan being implemented. And so now, kind of, the question is, can we bring it out and put 1617 on the top and think about what are the things that we wanna do going forward? There's this really nice structure there. And then it becomes, what does this committee bring back to this group as a whole? With their items for board participation. But some of the things are for Dan to do internally as communication within the district, if I'm interpreting it the same way you are. And so, but it's gonna be a little bit of a fine tuning with this community engagement committee, I think, for us to determine what's appropriate committee work versus what staff work in the district that just might have board oversight or board input. And hopefully, that doesn't turn into board micromanaging. That's gonna be really, I mean, that's my concern. It's gonna be really a good opportunity to figure out where there's gaps in the current plan, of things that we can particularly capitalize on now that we pass our referendum and we have an engaged community and people want to support things going on in the schools. And how do we make sure they know all the things that are happening? So it's a good structure due for an update. And then, like I said, I think we'll be bringing back some things here. If we have questions or if there are things that Dan feels, you know, would just be things he would continue doing, because he's doing a ton of it already. And so are all the other staff members named in that kind of communications plan? And I know a few of them are sitting here at the table who end up doing all that stuff. So anything else that you...
Yeah, I agree. And, and we're gonna talk about this strategic plan again at the next board meeting. But one of the pieces, of course, was community engagement. And, and so I think this ties really well into the committee about, and we will have that discussion about, okay, what part do I own and, and the board involvement? And it's no different than, you know, one of their components of the strategic plan, a lot of HR-related things we talked about. Okay, what's the personnel committee's role in, in working and assisting with that? And so I think it's really, the timing is really well. And I've also loved that meeting, very excited about that. It's a good vehicle to continue that work.
Susan?
So I'll tell you what would be helpful with me as a board member. Because, I mean, lots of us like to attend the other meetings. So there were no documents posted, so it wasn't clear that you were using a communication plan or what you're using or what document you're working on. So if you're doing that, if you post it, that'd be great. Because there was a lot of board discussion about that communication plan. And I don't know that Carrie and Jennifer were here when we had that discussion. So I don't know what's been, what the, the board discussions were that were incorporated into that plan, again. And then, there'll be minutes from that meeting so that we can read that and kind of tell what you talked about and...
Jeff's right that the first meeting was super short and was Dan saying to us, hey, did you ever have the communications plan? Is this the kind of thing that we might use to inform our committee work? And we both said, yeah, we'll take that and look at it.
So you're gonna post that as a piece that you used at that meeting?
And I don't know if you had that 1415 plan already previously provided to this board, but I would imagine it would...
Yeah, we approved it, yeah.
Right? And so it wasn't a new document. It was with this help loss of getting our committee framework. And we're like, yep, let's start from that instead of starting from scratch. So it seemed great to me, but it wasn't a, it wasn't a new thing.
Moving on to personnel committee report, Dean?
Yeah, I have, any of you want. This is the personnel committee report, if you want a copy of this. Stuff's getting passed around like my usual classroom approach. The personnel committee report is a brief summary of what we recently did, which we already reported out, and, and really a kind of a list of agenda items for coming year. To remind us, we completed the collective bargaining meeting conferred with the MGEA with a compensation plan that was summarized and approved by the board. We think the plan, as we reported, implements the, begins to implement the teacher compensation, compensation plan. It addresses the promise of the referendum and, and I think it should attract and retain our, our teachers. And then, the committee, however, since this was, since the referendum was approved late, we were engaged in meeting conferring late in the year, and we'll get started. And begin the bargain early in the fall so we can better integrate the salary cost into the annual budget cycle, which Jared and I, when, when Dan was absent, we talked about integrating it, kind of like when we get the maintenance plan and we get the staffing plan to tie it into that sequence somehow. And, and to seek earlier board approval and allow teachers and others to know the, our salaries earlier. And Dan, Dan has indicated that one of our, our items we have to address is, how does he and how does the district address these hard-to-fill positions? Which, which in fact, the best, the best compensation plan laid out in a grid or a chart that whatever we do is gonna do violence to that. And we have to find out how we do that, how we report it, how frequently it's done, that sort of thing. We also talked about, in the, I think in our very, our very last meeting, and Dan, I don't think you were there, but I mentioned this to you, that Jared and I, we, we, we heard so much about, at these committee meetings, about why teachers leave and why teachers don't leave. And it was a wide array. And I wasn't always, I wasn't sure this wasn't the same teacher reporting several times or many teachers reporting once. So I think some maybe systematic way of, of reporting and getting exit interviews. And I know we do some of that now. Another thing the committee would plan to do is to re, and Dan brought us this based on the, this time, this go-around of getting people into Level Four. And to review that application process, Dan reported to us that it was considerable time reported by the reviewer process as well as the people going through. Now, we knew the people going through because these are the pre-2004. And these are the people who've grown up without developing this kind of data as we, we go on. But we still need to review it and maybe make the process a little more effective. And in doing so, we, we're asking ourselves, evidently, the application process asks for two pieces. Your leadership, which is really the differentiating criteria between three and four to a large extent. And the other criterion, the other criterion was leadership. So we're asking ourselves, well, if you cut the, the narrative part of the application somewhat in half by simply putting your stress on the leadership portion, and then, how do you assess the, the teaching? And do we rely on some score or scores of the educator effectiveness? We haven't discussed this, but these are the kinds of issues that, and, but there are options, there are other options too. National Board Certification in lieu of other, of these other factors. Independent or application to DPI. DPI...
Did you mean international baccalaureate thing?
No, international board certification. And I was typing it out, I was typing it out, that came out of my fingers. And so I was, I was writing national board certification and it came out international baccalaureate.
Sometimes it happens you have your fingers in the wrong place on the keyboard.
It'll, it'll cost, it'll cost too much counseling to find out what happened. But, but I, I visited DPI and I, I talked to the, the teacher licensing bureau. And they do, they do have a, a process for kind of the, the regular teachers, like English teacher, high school teacher. But ones that don't fall into some of the more common teaching categories, that process is possible, but it's, but it, but it seems to be, it seems to be handled by a committee of state legislators, state educators that DPI forms and evaluates and so forth. We need to learn more, more about it and so forth. But the DPI standard is the, is the national board certification process. And that would remove the need for the review time and that sort of thing that we would have. And the committee will study and adopt criteria standards process for a specialist into entry four. And also to be noted that DPI has that review process as well. I think, are you aware of that?
Yep.
When we, when we bring, when we begin to address that, we can, we can see where that goes.
Dean?
Yeah?
Do you have sort of a timetable to that? I mean, is that something that's kind of on a front burner? Because I think there's some anxiety among some of the specialists about when is this really gonna happen? I just, I know it's challenging, but I just...
Yeah, we were, I was actually on time. We were prepared to talk about this and, at the next meeting. Yes, there, I need to roll with Tom sort of...
Yeah, so I, I think that, that, I think was gonna be our next meeting.
Yeah, so the committee's meeting again prior to the August 24th board meeting. We will come to the full board. Based on our discussion earlier, we'll, we were hoping to have something approved that night. But for sure, we'll, yeah. And we'll wanna report out to the teachers when they return.
Thanks.
I would like, I'll go ahead. I don't, go.
Finish it up, man.
You sure?
I just wanted to quickly mention, add, that we had a, what I thought was a really robust conversation because one of our building principals shared out with our committee feedback from district leaders, principals within our district. And super articulate, really on point, brought up awesome questions. And one of them, for instance, was taking a look at Danielson in terms of teaching performance and practice and what we... a look at Danielson in terms of teaching performance and practice, and what we might do with some of the criteria within Level Four. And so, I feel we have a healthy to-do list at our, at our next meeting, for sure. But just really great, very thoughtful feedbacks. And I appreciate it.
It was a good meeting.
It was.
It was a good meeting. Unfortunately, it presented more problems than it did.
No, no, challenges, man.
Challenges, okay. And the committee will also revert, we will get at reviewing board personnel policies, the Series 33,000, including corporation by reference into the handbook.
And 4,000.
That 4,000?
No, 3,000 is teachers, 4,000 support staff. And they're pretty similar, but not-
Okay, well, the personnel one. The committee also addressed changes in the teacher handbook suggested by HR, MGA, and other teachers. We have not received that, but we will, I believe, early in the fall. And, and we're going to review and study and address other personnel issues as necessary during the, during the year. So, we have a full, full plate and, and early workload.
Questions for Dean? Carrie, MGA?
Yes, Manona Grove Education Foundation is going to have the gala on November 5th. I wanted to make sure you all double check your calendars, have the date marked. And then, I had to be out of town yesterday morning during the meeting. And I asked Dan if he'd be willing to do the report to let us know if he was going to be there.
Sure. Majority of the meeting was on gala planning. And the, the foundation actually has a committee specifically for the gala, and Sue Manning sits on that committee as well. And they've been doing a tremendous amount of work, and they have it every year, but particularly, I think, learning from what they've done in the past. And I guess one of the takeaways I had about the planning, the big change, of course, is that they've been moved, you know, to the East Side Club. And we, we had a really good attendance last year, nearly 250 people. And the concern is this time, that it may sell out, you know, early. And, and so, pulling this all together and getting the communication out to the folks that, that, you know, may want to attend, the timing of that is maybe a little bit more critical. So, I, I'm just thoroughly impressed with the work that the committee has done. And it's just, so I, again, this is part, you know, for me, I get an opportunity to sit and listen. I'm not actively involved in that committee. So, but anyway, that was most of the discussion. And if there's things about that, certainly Susan can add to that piece. But in addition to the gala planning, two other things were discussed. One was Hall of Champions proposal. And that's something that hasn't come before the full board, but we need to make sure we report out on that at some point soon. I think we'll have Jeff Schreiner in to talk about his activity report. This is something that is kind of a precursor, perhaps, to Hall of Fame type thing, where we can recognize our former, you know, students in both athletics and activities and within the high school. And this event with the foundation involved, you know, not necessarily with funding, we talked about that perhaps for support, but also just the idea that we're reaching the same audience and looking at our alumni and community members. And so, you know, Jeff Schreiner, I credit him for being proactive and wanting to involve the foundation, you know, in this project. So, we'll make sure we report out that to the board as well, the details of that project. And then, the last thing we talked about was update to the foundation webpages. And again, we have a subcommittee, Carrie is part of that as well, that has been working on, you know, some really positive updates to that. And, and our staff, you know, at school, Joyce is a part of that, Marine Lehman does a lot of that. But as far as creating the content about what we go on there, they've done a lot of work on that. And so, we talked through that a little bit as well. So, those are kind of the key points.
To tell them the really cool news? So, one of the things they're doing with the gala this year that I think is important for you to understand, again, I think it's important for the board when things are going on that have occurred for you to know about them, because the community knows about them. But, and this helps you to be informed. There was a, one of the things the gala committee decided was, they're going to make an ask for a $2,000 sponsor. They've never done that before. They've never even asked for a $1,000 sponsor. So, they did that for Manona State Bank. And they said yes. So, the gala is starting with, thank you guys very much, Manona State Bank is a $2,000 sponsor. So, that is really great. If you know people who work there, or you, you have an account there, if you thank them, that would be greatly appreciated. Because part of it is, it's about recognition and supporting this community. And this is a really neat step that they have taken. And the foundation has never done this before. And then, the number two piece is, so they are also now targeting $1,000 sponsors, which they haven't done before. Generally, we have a $500 group. They get a lot of recognition, they get tables. And again, better watch, because those tables are going to sell out. So, and that's the good news. So, those letters went out. And some of them were people that we do a lot of business with. So, if you have an opportunity, again, if you see Michelle from PMA, or you see Dan from McKinstry, or some of those people that have been solid supporters, encourage them to respond to us in this particular area. And then, the other sponsorship letters are going out like August 22nd. And those are all with personal notes. So, again, this is really a concerted effort to be able to support a district who is having their fundings cut at a state level with things that they, innovative things that they need, such as field trips to Alda Leupold, things like that, and conferences and special events. So, again, hopefully, as board members will support them as they do this, it's really the epic work and really, so we hope you'll go.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Policy Committee report. Susan?
We did meet yesterday for four and a half hours.
Four and a half hours.
But we went through all of the updates. There were updates, as I told you last time, I think we were, just before we finished this, we knew we'd get another series of updates. I'm sure not there are a bunch in June. But we went through all of those, and we are, are now at the point where we literally just have to do our final check-ins with Dan and if you want, with Jared, I think, a couple of his staff members. But on the 6,000s through 9,000s, we've reviewed them all once. And from our perspective, they're pretty much done, except for the questions we raised. So, we just need to go through that last piece. And then, the process is, the final versions go into NEOL for their, their final formatting and stuff. And then, they'll eventually come back to the board. And at that point, we, I think our plan at this point is to bring, depending on the timing of it, bring the whole thing. And then, we can, and we did talk a little bit last night about maybe a special workshop to go through it, just so we can, rather than piecemeal, which would take us the rest of the year, it would be nice to get it done in one fell swoop. So, hopefully, that'll be coming up within a couple, within the next two months.
And I'm just going to correct Susan just a little bit here. So, her comment was, we've been, we've been through all of these policies at least once.
Oh, many times.
Okay, just so you know.
Many of them, many times.
We have read every single one of these documents, a minimum of twice.
Right.
And more like a maximum of four.
Oh, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I can think of one where it was more like 10.
Again, understanding if you have any questions about what we've done, and you want to start asking now, that would help a lot as we start going forward with these policies. We have checked every statutory site. We have checked every statute against the language. We've checked it against our old policies. We've read it for content and spelling and understandability, and continued to make changes.
Well, yeah, I don't want to give people the impression they're coming out perfect because they're not-
No, they're not perfect. They're really-
But there has, there has to be a point where you say good enough. And that's, that's, I guess, that's-
We did the groundwork. So, now it's going to be your job. And you may want to schedule a work, a special workshop to do that.
Yeah, we talked about that last night. I think we will, so, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. New business, discussion on possible approval of teacher and support staff handbook revisions.
Okay, we have this for possible approval tonight. Our preference would be to have it approved so that we have time to update the handbooks and get the staff when they return. If there are concerns about any of the changes, though, you know, can wait for the next meeting. So, I want to make that clear. There's two types of changes. So, the first ones are regarding health insurance. As you know, the board approves our health insurance change effective January 1st. And so, the handbook, of course, needs to be updated to reflect that change. And so, it's really just a procedural thing. So, that was done after we had finished the whole meet confer sessions with teachers and so on. So, Nicole drafted, you know, the changes. And so, what we've done is, we have emailed those and had correspondence with MGA representatives. We initially had posted on board docs. We did get some feedback from MGA, suggested change, which we did make. So, apologize. Today, we updated a new version. And administrative content, I wrote this afternoon what that change was. Basically, initially, we were going to simply say the board will annually determine, you know, the premiums. Well, instead, we decided to be specific. Here is what the rates will be. And the plan that the board approved is that the board will contribute 95% of the premium. So, we decided to be clear and put that right in there. And that was a suggestion for the teachers to make it clear that, you know, what that is. So, that's the only change from, if you print yours off a day earlier, that we added that, you know, language. So, it's almost identical, the support staff and teacher part. The only thing, the teacher's a little bit different, because they have a little bit different contribution, depending on what percentage they are for part-time. That's, that's not a change from existing practice. Okay, so why don't we stop there and just talk about the insurance handbook changes and any questions or comments on those?
Susan?
I just had a question about the dental insurance, because I saw that was struck away. What's the status of that?
Yeah, that was a mistake. This section of the handbook is about health insurance. It's a separate section on dental. So, the typo.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought, just to make sure.
You wanted approval tonight?
If the board is comfortable, we'd like to, yes.
Susan?
Well, I think we have just a couple of quick changes. And that's why it might be helpful. I mean, I would treat this like policy. First read, make the simple fixes, and then, bring it back clean for approval, but whatever is best for you. But under the support staff handbook for post revisions due to health insurance change, 15.03 health insurance, the board shall provide health insurance to eligible employees. Yeah, maybe we approve it, but it's the district to apply that. And that's one of the things we had with NEOL.
That's a matter, I think that's a matter of opinion, though. Anyway, go ahead, finish.
And it also goes for A, eligibility, minimal hours for any board contribution. It's a district contribution. It's, we approve it, but it is the way the district compensates and provides benefits to the staff. This sounds like the board does that every time, and you don't want that to sound like that, if in fact, you're doing that. So, I would suggest those two changes. And then, it might be helpful, just for the community, so, to explain, I think we have a pretty good understanding of it. Maybe you want to put in writing. But at a time when you go on to referendum, we're going from, and it's because of the savings, I understand that, but I think it'd be nice if leadership say that out loud, either you or Peter. We're going from a 12, basically a 12.6 contribution from staff to a 5% contribution from staff. That's pretty significant on healthcare where this change arise. So, it might just be helpful for, does the board understand why? I think it's important that this board understands-
I think we discussed it when the board approved the health insurance change.
Okay, so if they do, that's a yes from everybody. And maybe in two sentences, you'd want to tell the community, because it's because of savings. Okay, that we're able to do that. Maybe you want to say that out loud, because that's going to be a question we need to get.
Sure. Yeah, let's remind everyone. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, so, the new, with the new plan, the board's contribution is 95%, as opposed to it was 86.4. But that 95% is still a lesser amount because of the savings of the new plan than the old ones. So, the board actual dollar contribution is less, as well as employees, a win-win. It's less for both.
Thank you for saying that out loud.
The language, Hannah, so the language we've used in the past has always been the board, not the district. And for example, the master agreement, which we just ratified and signed, is agreement between the board and the MGA and the teachers. It's the board that provides compensation, I believe, not the district.
And I would agree with, I would agree with that. And I haven't always agreed in policy. I've just agreed to change it, because I didn't think it mattered one way or the other very much. But I think it's totally appropriate to have the board in here, because the board does make these agreements.
We're the ones who provide the money.
We're the ones who provide the money. We're, I mean, we're the ones who sign the contracts and the whole thing. So, I think it's totally appropriate to say the word.
Okay, so you're going to say-
So, I don't, I don't support changing it.
That's right, I don't support changing it.
Just to be consistent, I just look at the actual entire handbook, and the board is referenced.
I was going to say-
The both are referenced.
You have to change the entire-
It appears at any time that there's something where there's a decision that, well, that the board makes, which is the case here.
Correct.
Dean, you had hit it?
I think for elevator talk, following Susan Manning's comment, it would be good, not only, if we could get just a little short paragraph blurb of these change of percentage contribution, and also, also dollar amounts of cost and benefit, it would be good to, I'd like to see, see how that has changed, maybe before and after. Is that possible?
Well, yeah, I'll just, I mean, it was in the June board meeting packet, so we can share that out again, sure.
I threw that away.
Yes, we can ship, write that.
Right. This language just brings it up, brings the handbook in line with what we decided, didn't you?
Yeah, I understand. But I just thought if you could get it in a nice abbreviated form for-
Do you want to talk about the support staff?
Bullet point type of thing.
Okay, so any other questions or comments about the recommended changes regarding health insurance?
I might suggest that you just give WSB Legal, Bob Butler, somebody, just, if they're okay with the board language, I'm fine with it. I just think it's one of the things that we're trying to build consistency in, in our policies right now. But I just want to know it's okay.
Well, I guess, since I think the NEOL policies were all written that way, and we just changed it as a, I regard it as a matter of preference. I don't think that's necessary. And I think our, in terms of consistency, we've already said the entire handbook is written that way. And it's been that way. It's written as the board. And so, to change one piece of it wouldn't make any sense to me. So, I guess, I prefer-
I think it comes from the, from the history of the handbook coming from-
The contract, right.
The contract. And the contract was between, it's actually between the individual teachers and the board.
Right.
With the master agreement being a guy, you know, giving the language of that.
And, and we do hire, I mean, we do-
We do, the board hires the person.
The board who hires, and it's the board who signs the contracts. It's the board who, you know.
Does anybody else feel a need to investigate this issue of using the language, district versus board? Carrie?
No, in fact, I had read this up, and I was ready to make the motion to approve. So, I'm just waiting for everyone else to be ready.
All right. Dan, you want to talk about the support staff?
All right. So, the, the second document is several changes, just specifically for the support staff handbook. And if you recall, back in, I believe it was February, that the board approved a number of changes for the teacher handbook. And we've gone through the meet confer process. Once we finished that, we decided to move on to the support staff. Now, support staff, the process is a little bit different, because we have several groups. And so, we started with the committee. A number of these changes are very similar to the ones that were in the teacher. There's procedural cleanup things. But as far as the communication, what we did, since we didn't have a represented group, is then, we went out, Jared, Nicole, myself, took these proposed changes and met with all the different support staff groups individually. And so, on the board docs, I put that memo showing the schedule of that. So, that occurred this spring, got feedback changed, shared with them, here's the rationale for the change and so on. Feedback was positive, yep, it makes sense. And so, at this point now, we're prepared to, you know, move forward with the board, you know, changes. So, the whole purpose of this is just to clean up things that either were inaccurate, or just maybe not clear or redundant and so on. There should be nothing substantive in there. The, the big one, the first one, the sick leave bank, was something that we've always had. It just was absent from the handbooks. We added it to the teacher. We need to add it to the support staff as well.
The committee approves it, too.
Any questions about this? Support staff revisions, any provisions? Carrie?
I'm ready to move approval of teacher and support staff handbook revisions as presented.
Smack it.
Okay, it's been moved to second, segmented. I'm sorry, actually, my board docs is updated. Okay, good. Any further discussion? Susan?
Again, I'm going to ask that, again, I'm reading right here. Madison Metropolitan School District pays benefits. Madison Metropolitan School District, the board considers what those are, but it's actually the district who makes the payment. I think it's-
Can I ask you to make your proposals as a form as a motion or amendment, so that-
Can I ask you to make your proposals as a form as a motion or amendment so that we can just decide on it?
Oh, sure, because there won't be a second, but don't come back and talk to me about it. I think under both those situations, I suggested that those, it is a board approved, but it actually is a district payment that's made based on board approval and I suggest that both of those should be district. So, when you write this like this, this holds the board professionally responsible for this payment rather than the district. So, I would make a motion that you would change the language to district versus board in those two places.
Is there a second?
Fine, okay. So, if that action comes, I can then reclusive myself as having opposed this language. Ezra?
Back to the main motion, which is approval and support staff need further discussion. Approval of the handbook provisions as presented? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No, I mean, I, I.
Day. Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, discussion of possible approval of annual declaration and parent notice of district student academic standards.
Okay, this is purely a procedural thing. There was a new statute a year ago that stated that annually the board must approve basically the academic standards that we're following. And we, as please had mentioned earlier in our report, and we'd mentioned a year ago, we're following the state standards which are included. So, we created this document a year ago and we need to bring it back annually. I probably should have done it at the July meeting, but the key is we have it here before the start of the school year. And so, this is the identical motion that we had a year ago, the same standards, we just updated the date for sixteen seventeen.
Okay, I was looking at the live link on the website and I was just going to confirm my understanding, you would just literally change fifteen sixteen to sixteen seventeen at the top, so we're not making this substantive change to our academic standards.
Correct.
Right? That's how I understood, that's why I'm ready to be cool with this. Anything for a motion or do you want more discussion?
No, we either order, we can either order, somebody chooses to make a motion, go ahead.
I'm on a roll, I'd like to move approval, let me find what it is. Approval of the annual declaration and parent notice of the district student academic standards in effect for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year, presented to section one twenty that twelve, print thirteen, and section one eighteen that thirty-one G A one of the state statutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been, there's, there's two motions we have to make and we're talking about the first one. Yes, is that correct?
I just read it right off the board docs.
Regulation, we have to.
Well, down below, we actually have two pieces.
Yeah.
Which piece do you want first?
I think you just gave us the first one.
It's all one motion, so, so and, and then read the second.
Well, actually, stay here, it's two.
It could be two motions, okay.
Okay, so, the first section has been moved, was there a second?
Second.
Second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now you want the second one? And I move to direct the administration to incorporate the board approved list and description of the student academic standards that should be in effect for two thousand sixteen seventeen school year into a notice for parents and guardians that the administration shall provide in a manner that is consistent with the requirements of section one twenty twelve thirteen of the state statutes. Looking for a second.
Second.
Moving to second discussion? My discussion will be the first one, say that we adopt the standards, the second one is the statutory requirement that we adopt the administration, that we, we tell the administration to incorporate the majority. Yes, the system. Do we move seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Future agenda items, we had a workshop last night, all of you were there, we discussed future agenda items, I will go check with Dan, we'll schedule a list of those, I haven't done it for the last twenty-four hours. The next meeting is August, the school board is August twenty-fourth at seven P M. And then Friday thirteenth, and then the district annual meeting is coming up on October twelfth. Is that right?
October fifth.
October fifth, sorry.
Okay, it's just weird.
That's a really fun name.
All right.
Motion to the chair, ten thirty-two?
Is there a second?
Yeah, maybe, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?